I will be starting the meeting momentarily. Just information for everybody, this meeting is recorded because we use for LaPorte Public Access. So just be mindful that it is being recorded today. It's recorded every time, but I may sometimes forget to let you all know that we're recording. Then in order to start our meeting, what we should be doing is saying the Pledge of Allegiance, but I'm going to ask everybody to say it on your own because we would otherwise have a very strange choir here. So a couple of seconds. Okay, thank you. Okay, as our meeting starts, I will begin our statement during COVID time period. First of all, the regular meeting of the Town Council of Michiana Shores is being convened at 7:00 PM Tuesday, March 9th. At the time leading up to this meeting, the country is still facing a pandemic outbreak of the COVID, the novel coronavirus, COVID-19. In response, Indiana Governor Eric Colcombe has issued a series of executive orders, which among other things declared a public emergency and suspended various state statutes. On March 23rd, 2020, the governor issued Executive Order 2009, which specifically addressed public meetings and the Indiana Open Door Law. The executive order, along with the opinion and guidance issued by the Indiana Public Access Councilor, allowed for meetings to be held via video conferencing or by telephone conferencing. This allowance remains in effect for the duration of the public health emergency that was declared in the first order 20, or the first executive order declaring the emergency 20-02. The governor has currently issued the most recent health order for the 12th time, and it has been extended from the, through the 30th of March at this point. In accordance with Public Access Guidelines, notice of the virtual meeting replacing the meeting was posted at the fire station meeting room and as well as on the town board, and you will be able to, anybody who wants to later on, will be able to watch anything on LaPorte Public Access. Okay, now, oops, I'm just gonna, oops, here's one where I forgot. In addition to this notice, I'm going to remind everybody that we will be running this via Robert's Rules of Order. Please wait to be recognized before speaking about any issue at all. Thank you. So let's go on to the first order of business. Joan, can you hear us? You're all right? You're good?
I'm good. You can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you too. Please do the roll call for us, okay?
President Dinah Dumbrus.
President.
Vice President Michael Martinez.
President.
Pam Doobie, I believe she's absent.
Absent.
Mike Lanciaoni.
Here.
Richard Young. No Richard Young?
No, I don't see him. He's not asking to come in. Hold on, let me check.
Well, he never picked up his data either from the office.
Okay, well, okay, yesterday, so, okay.
I'm present. Attorney Laura Narenberg.
Here Joan, thanks.
Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
Present.
Police Chief Mark Swistec.
Present.
Park Board President Dolly Millick.
Thanks.
No doubt, no Dolly Millick. Okay, BZA President Matt Bowen.
Not here.
Sounds like he's absent. Building Commissioner Steve Thomas.
Present.
Plug Plant Administrator Ray Dumbrus.
Uh, he's walking around, so he's gonna be in and out.
Okay. Advisory Plant Commission President Howard Jablon.
Absent.
Absent. Code Enforcement Officer Deb Chubb.
Present.
Uh, website Samantha Arnold. Absent.
No, no, she's present. She's present.
I didn't hear anything.
Okay.
Sorry. Road Commissioner Bob Sokowski.
But she's Samantha's here. Joan can't see you. Okay, go ahead.
Present.
Okay. That's it. Why's she forgot someone?
Okay. All right, I don't think so. I think I went over that several times, but if I have forgotten somebody, please remind me and I'll add it to the next agenda. Okay. So I would like to ask the someone to approve the meeting agenda unless you have any additions or corrections to make to the agenda.
Lanciaoni, I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Second.
Martinez, second.
Mike Martinez, second. Mike Lanciaoni moved, Michael Martinez seconded to accept the meeting agenda as presented. All Town Council members were notified and those reporting here were sent a most recent meeting agenda about half an hour ago, or revised agenda. Okay, let's go to the minutes of the February 9th meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes that Joan sent out?
Yep.
Okay, do we have any, any questions, any comments, any corrections? If I don't hear any comments on this, I will ask for someone to move to approve the minutes as written.
Lanciaoni, I'll move to approve as written.
Okay. Mike Lanciaoni moved to approve as written. I, I need a-
Martinez, second.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let us move on to resolutions and ordinances.
Do we have to vote?
Oh, yes, we do. I'm sorry. Thank you, Joan. Okay. For this, then I will ask for a roll call vote. Mike Lanciaoni.
Aye.
Michael Martinez.
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. Okay, so both three voting to approve the minutes as they are written.
They're too absent, right?
Yes, they're too absent. I keep looking over here to see if anything is going on, but I don't want to take the time now to call, to try to call. Maybe Rich needs a reminder, but, um, okay. Do you want me, do you want to take just a short pause while I try to reach Rich?
That's fine.
Okay, I will just try to do this. I will mute my-
Is Donna?
Yes.
I think Rich is on vacation. He's not, not been home for, I haven't seen him for a week.
Oh, really? So he may have forgotten to let us know, because I left a voicemail for him. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. I think, I mean, the only thing we see over there is a St. Patrick sign on. There's no other lights and stuff over there.
Okay.
So I think he's out of town.
Oh, maybe he might be then. Okay, thank you. Then we're not gonna bother about that. Okay, so let us move on to the resolutions and ordinances. Last month, we brought up a resolution in support of fair redistricting introduced by the League of Women Voters. We were not able to make a, to vote at that time, but perhaps, I mean, Laura, I'm gonna turn this over to you. We have three out of five of us. Will we be able to vote on that resolution this evening?
Yes, you should be able to because you voted last time.
Okay.
All three of you voted in favor of it last time. We were concerned about getting it passed in one meeting.
Okay.
So yes, we should be good if, if everybody's still in favor of it tonight.
Okay, very good. Do we need to reread this or are we done?
Well, I believe all three of you have a copy of it, and we did read it last time. So if, if there's no objections, I think it would be fine. Unless there's anyone that is present that would like to hear it, I'd be glad to read it again. I'm not trying to skirt the duty, but.
Okay.
So I leave that up to you, Dinah. If you prefer that I read it, I'd be fine.
Looks like, I'm sorry, Michael, were you speaking?
I was not, no. I read it the original time you sent out last month, so I'm good.
Very good. So well, then why don't we proceed with a vote for the adoption of the resolution of the Port of Fair redistricting? I need a motion to approve.
Lanciaoni, so move.
Okay, Mike Lanciaoni moves to approve. I need a second.
Martinez, second.
Okay, Mike Lanciaoni moved and Michael Martinez seconded that we accept, approve the resolution in support of fair redistricting. This was our second vote for this resolution, and the resolution has now passed, 3 to 0. Thank you very much.
You want to do a roll call again?
Pardon?
Uh, you'll, you'll want to do the roll vote again.
I did the roll vote. I asked. I asked, well, didn't I? I thought I asked. I'm sorry. I'm like losing it today, okay? It must be those red peppers. It's gotta be. Okay.
Lanciaoni.
Aye.
Michael Martinez.
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. All right, so now we did it. Thank you for the reminder. All right. Well, let us move on to the alternate purchasing agents. Laura, could you please-
Okay, sure. As a lot of you know, we did discuss this past couple meetings now, just in the event that something were to happen or if Joan's out of town and if an emergency arises or an urgent need arises, so we put together an alternate purchasing agent ordinance. So it reads, whereas the Town of Michiana Shores Ordinance Number 2010-03 established the Town of Michiana Shores Purchasing Agency as the purchasing agency and designated the clerk treasurer to serve as the purchasing agent for the town when possible. And whereas Indiana Code Title V, State and Local Administration, Article 22, Public Purchasing, Chapter 4, Purchasing Organizations, Section 6, number of purchasing agents authorizes the Town of Michiana Shores to establish more than one purchasing agent for the Town of Michiana Shores, its departments and agencies. And whereas a purchasing agency desires to establish an alternate purchasing agent in the event clerk treasurer is incapacitated or otherwise unable to perform the functions of purchasing agent for the Town of Michiana Shores, now therefore be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Michiana Shores, LaPorte County, Indiana as follows. Section 1, if the clerk treasurer is incapacitated or otherwise unable to perform the functions of purchasing agent for the Town of Michiana Shores, the functions of the purchasing agent should be delayed whenever possible until the clerk treasurer is available to perform those functions. Section 2, for purposes of this ordinance, the phrase incapacitated or otherwise unable to perform the functions of purchasing agent, end quote, shall mean any period of disability, any period of vacation, any period of medical leave, or other leave of absence from employment with the town or office with the town, or being out of town and unable to perform the necessary functions of purchasing agent for the town due to such absence. Section 3, when the clerk treasurer is incapacitated or otherwise unable to perform the functions of purchasing agent for a prolonged period of time, e.g. a week or more, or for periods when the purchasing agent is unavailable and an emergency arises and there is an urgent need for a purchase, acquisition, or contract, the Town of Michiana Shores authorizes Town Council member Richard Young to act as an agent for the purchasing agency, specifically as an alternate purchasing agent in the administration of the duties of the purchasing agency. Section 3, in the absence of a quorum of the Town Council and the clerk treasurer, the alternate purchasing agent may open bids publicly but must do so in the presence of one or more witnesses at the time and place designated in the invitation for bids. Section 4, in all determinations and awards of contracts, a purchasing agent shall provide prompt written notice to the successful bidder on behalf of the town. The alternate purchasing agent may serve in this capacity if the clerk treasurer is unavailable. Section 5, any person acting as an alternate purchasing agent under this ordinance shall be subject to and fully comply with the town's purchasing ordinance. And then in parentheses, Ordinance Number 2010-03, as well as Indiana's Public Purchasing Law, IC 5-22, at section 6, the Town Council retains the right to change this designation or to designate additional purchasing agents as necessary. And then just the, the standard boilerplate approved and adopted by, on this date.
Okay. All right. So are there any, any questions from Mike and Michael? Oh, just a minute, okay. Just a minute, please. Uh, Mike and Michael?
Nope.
All right.
I have a question.
Uh, okay. Joan, actually, I, okay, you know what? You go ahead and then Bob will follow you because Bob raised his hand already. Okay. Joan, are you going?
I'm listening. I thought you said Bob was going to go on.
Okay, let me let Bob do it because Bob raised his hand first. Okay, Bob, would you like to ask the question?
Is there a monetary limit? If I need a repair on a truck, I gotta track somebody down and get that approved before I get it repaired?
Uh, if that's directed to me, yes, you would go to the purchasing agent. And if the purchasing agent, and that's just standard, Bob, that's probably what you're already doing now, and if the clerk treasurer is unavailable for some reason, as articulated in this draft, then Rich Young can fill in in that capacity.
Okay.
So there's no monetary limit, like $500 or more? It's a flat fee? If it's $25, I gotta get approved?
Uh, no, I, I believe that there is a limit as to, as to where, where the breakdown is, and I think Joan may be able, I think actually we even have something already written down. Joan, would you be able to enlighten us about that?
I don't have it right with me. Uh, I'm not at the office. I was not aware that this was coming up until I got the agenda, and I didn't know, I wasn't able to read it. I'm just listening to it tonight. So the only thing I can suggest is check with me tomorrow, Bob, and I can tell you if there's a, I know there's a limit, but I don't know what it is. And I, I know there's a limit on the credit cards, but I can't remember on this. But there's no, no way you're gonna get any of your repairs done for less than $500. Because none of them that have come through and since I've been clerk treasurer has been $500 or less than $500. So I, I do know that much.
Well, oil changes don't cost $500, so.
Well, no, but they haven't had that done for a long time.
Yeah, they get it done.
There's no reason why you can't ask me to see if we have, so, but I know it's coming in for payment. Because that's the only way I can control the money matching to what's been in the budget and approved.
Question is, why do we even have a budget for items that the commissioners or the people that are, to spend that money? Why do we even have a budget if we have to do this?
Oh, that, that's, hey, I'm sorry. I don't mean to laugh, but that's for me to keep track of, the budget.
Okay.
The monies that are spent, there's appropriations that go with the budget, Bob. And if that appropriation is overspent, then it's up to the clerk treasurer to figure out where to get the money from, and that we have to get that approved through the State Board of Accounts.
No.
To transfer funds.
Thank you, Joan, for explaining, and I'm just going to add that even in smaller groups, like for instance for the park board and for the Booster Club, we have really low uh, uh, threshold for expenses that are being spent, and it's for us to have a better idea at any given time on how much money is going out and what it's going out for. So this is just good practice, and this is not something else. It's good practice, and that's what we will be doing. Even if there is a budget assigned to a particular group, large expenses have to be noted before they are actually, you know, made, so. Um, and we're just following, as Joan said, what has to be done. So now, Mike, yes, Laura?
I, I just wanted to add one point for clarification. I apologize if this wasn't clear. Uh, this, this ordinance is simply adding an alternate purchasing agent, Mr. Sokowski. I, we already have a purchasing agent ordinance, so this is-
Okay, Matt. What, Joan?
Laura, it's not been done. I get the bill. That's when I know there's been a, a service performed on any of the trucks or any of the vehicles, I should say, because we do have mores in, besides trucks. And I, I get a bill, they send it through fax. That's the only way I know that there's been a repair. So it's not been done in the past.
Okay, well, then it's a good thing that we're doing this, so people will now realize that we, we have some procedures to follow to help keep the books in order.
Yes, thank you very much. Good way to, Laura, thank you, and thank you, Joan, for your explanation, so.
Well, I, I do have a question. What is the ordinance number on this?
I do not yet have an ordinance number, Joan. I, it starts with 2021, because you pointed that out. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll have to see what it is.
Okay, and because there's only three board members here, we're gonna go through it again at the next meeting, so I thought we would have plenty of time. And I realize that everybody did get the agenda relatively late, so I, I either think that's just mine, or we can take care of that soon.
Thank you, Laura. But as point of order, I will point out that I mailed an agenda out to everybody on Friday evening. It has had two small revisions, three actually, corrections and revisions, so you got two other copies for me since Friday.
Well, that's, you're right, you did, but I do not have a copy of the ordinance in order to speak on it.
Understand. Yes, I understand. Thank you, Joan. Okay, and thank you, Laura. So now, let's go back, then that means we will not be making any final votes at this time. We will be going over this again next month, but at least we have some questions answered, and we've got the, our groundwork laid, you know, for this ordinance, correct, Laura?
Yeah, and I'll be glad to send a copy to all the board members so that everybody has one easily accessible.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. And Joan, sorry, it's Bob's request, just let us know what the limit was as well, because I wanna see where we're at on that, between Martinez.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. So let us go on to the clerk treasurer's report at this point. So Joan, this is for you.
Okay, on the clerk treasurer's report, I noticed in going over it since I got home, I have missed the February additional appropriations. I forgot to scan that in the computer, I mean, into my desk. So I'll go through the March 9 vouchers. We have A E Boyce Key Fund Software License, $1,520. And then there's a, excuse me, there's another cost. That was for the license. And then there's a one for payroll, a software license of $1,520. And there's one for billing, $2,560. That is for the leaf and the refuse pickup billings. Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department for Fire Protection, $3,471. And $105 for the rental of the hall in our office. Long Beach Police, Police Protection for February, $4,877. Police Protection for March, $4,877. I'm holding this check until we get the, I still have two people who have not signed the contract. I'm waiting on Rich Young and Pam Doobie. And Republic Services for Refuge Service, $3,776. U.S. Postal Service postage, one row of stamps, $55. The Grounds Guys for Cut, Remove Two Trees From The Creek and Remove Branches on Both Sections Of The Trail, the old part and the new part. That was $700. Bob Sokowski for Fuel, $51.25. Department of Water Works for Water In The Garage, $9.49. Water for Kincaid Park, $9.49. Brenda Heckman for her travel to and from the bank and the post office, $82.20. And then we have AIM, our membership for the year of 2020, $50. LaPorte County Herald Dispatch, that was for the affidavits. Uh, one was for $187, $197. Another one was for $177, and the third one was for $185. That's just for publication for the BZASR special use. Maple City Tree for removing the tree, two large trees, one by the fire station and one at the corner of Shadow, $1,300. That was approved by Bob Sokowski. And Bob, you need to come in and sign some of these vouchers that you've been approving, the work done on it, so when you have time. That total is $26,492.43.
Okay, Joan. Mike and Michael, do you have any questions on these?
I don't know.
All right. In that case, I need someone to, uh, move that we accept the vouchers as Joan presented and approve them?
Martinez makes a motion to approve the vouchers as presented for March 9.
Okay, thank you, Michael. I need a second.
Lanciaoni, it's second.
Okay, Michael Martinez has moved, Mike Lanciaoni has seconded the approval of the vouchers to be paid for March 2021. Um, I will do a roll call vote. Michael Martinez.
Hi.
Uh, Mike Lanciaoni.
Hi.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. Um, uh, the voucher, payment of vouchers has been approved. Thank you, Joan. Next, in this section, Joan, did you have something else that you needed to present as, as a report?
The only other thing I have to report is the annual financial report has been published. It's online with Gateway, and it also was published in the news, the LaPorte County Herald Dispatch last Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, I had listed a job description, required tasks, but at this time, um, there have to be a few corrections made to one of them, so I will not be presenting any of them today. So we will work on this, um, through this coming month and then present these again next month. The job, the actual tasks, required tasks of the various different positions. We will move into departmental reports at this point, and for the first report, I will invite Police Chief Mark Swistec.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of February, as you know, we dealt with quite a bit of snow and cold weather. Um, the Long Beach Police Department, however, still handled in our areas of responsibility 142 calls for service when compared to 138 calls for service in the year previous during the month of February. In Michiana, we patrolled 63 hours of patrol presence within the town itself for a total of 380 total miles driven. There were a total of seven traffic stops that resulted in two citations, six warning tickets. We had one misdemeanor arrest, which I will speak about here shortly. There were a total of four ordinance violations that were looked into, two ordinance citations were issued. Those were issued on February 10th and February 20th, and both of those were issued in the 400 block of Ho-Kagan Drive. We checked four alarms for the month. Things of significance, on February 6th, Deputy Yagelski conducted a traffic stop on El Portal Drive. The driver, who was found to be a visiting nurse from Granger, Indiana, was arrested on a misdemeanor traffic offense for driving on a suspended license. On February 24th, Deputy Yagelski conducted an investigation into some suspicious activity where an individual was observed throwing an item from a moving vehicle on El Portal Drive. Deputy Yagelski looked into it, spoke with the individual, documented the event for future reference. And then just this past week, yesterday, we discovered that the fire hydrant at Brookside and El Portal was leaking water from it. Um, I did contact your fire captain, Robert Sokowski, made him aware of it as well, and then we called out the Michigan City Water Department. Within an hour, they came out and addressed the fire hydrant for you. Um, aside from that, if anybody has any questions, that's all they have to report.
Thank you very much Chief, that was a very informative report, and thanks for the attention you're paying to this, does any, do um, and, does anyone have a comment or a question of him, Mike, Michael?
Yeah, uh, Chief, this is Mike, Michael Martinez, wanted to say thanks, I definitely have, you know, when we started this contract in January, we were looking for, you know, not better, not better, but just police presence, and I think we can all agree that we've seen that um throughout, uh, you know, whether working from home or up there by uh, at the pizza as well, so uh appreciate all the, the hard work so far.
I appreciate that very much, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you Michael for making that great comment, okay, thank you Chief again, all right.
You're welcome.
Number two, uh, Fire Chief Gary Vendix, please.
Um, for the month, we had three meetings, we spent 185.36 hours on everything, uh, we had four, four calls, um, we had two first responder calls here in Michiana Shores, one was on El Portal, and one was on Shadow, and then we had a fire alarm on Creek Drive over in Village Michiana, and then we had another medical call on uh Michiana Drive. Uh, so basically, things slowed down, which is nice. Um, one thing I would like to inform the Town Council is that uh Michiana Shore is going to be retiring our second engine, that is a 1981 Pierce, um, we found a, it's not a new truck, it's a 2017, over in Ohio, um, and we are in the process of purchasing that engine to make it our frontline engine, and moving Engine 2 over as our secondary engine. That, you should probably see that new engine probably within, I would say, the next week or 10 days or so at the station.
Uh huh, okay.
That should put all our rolling stock, at least 2,000 and newer. So the other one, the Engine 4, it's time to retire it, there's a safety issue with that one, and it's just beyond its life at this point. So, we're kinda proud, um, we did pretty well with uh, with our donations this year, um, and we've been saving quite a minute, bit of money for the last 10 years for this engine, uh, so uh, we're gonna be very proud of that new engine once we get it.
All right.
Other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you very much, so, you know, even though the restrictions are being lifted a little bit, no, uh, no thoughts of uh takeout breakfast or anything like that, are there?
No, we uh, we talked about it a little bit, uh, we got a meeting tomorrow night, um, we're pretty sure we're not gonna have the spring one, but we're gonna be shooting for the fall one.
Okay, great.
Just because of, uh, you know, putting that many people in the station and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, sure, okay.
That's our thoughts of this, oh, if anything changes, I'll definitely let everybody know.
Okay, somebody wanted to ask your question, Nathan? Yes, Samantha?
Yeah, I did, when does, when does the new, when will we have the new uh fire engine?
Well, well, we're waiting on the bank right now, um, and then when we can get down there and pick it up, probably, I'm gonna say maybe by next week sometime.
Okay.
I was just wondering if um, I know we're not having the breakfast, but is it worth having a drive-by, or people come see you, or something, I don't know, kids like fire engines, people like new fire engines.
Yeah, that's something I could think about, maybe this spring, because we've got some work to do on it, uh, we gotta get the lettering on it, and everything transferred off of that engine, we got some, we gotta take it a couple places to get some things done with it yet, so uh.
Okay.
I couldn't let you know.
That'd be, I mean, okay, cool.
Great, thank you very much, see Samantha, those are our website stuff now, Gary, so the cheese, you know, can even plug the fire department and all this stuff, so that'll be good, okay?
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, was somebody else trying to make a comment? No, okay, uh, I will move on to the next report then, and that will be our Building Commissioner Steve Thomas.
Hey Donna, how are you?
Hi, good, thank you, so.
Uh, um, the only thing we've had since the last meeting was uh two permits were issued, to the best of my knowledge, one was on uh number 8 Shadow for a shed, and 3915 Hiawatha for s- um, an interior remodel project.
Okay.
Don't we have a demolition?
That's come and gone, yeah, I forgot about that, but yeah, that's, that's already done.
Okay, okay, and for those who don't know, the demolition was at uh, I believe 39, or 38, 45 Michiana Drive, that very derelict house, has finally come down, so, which is good, there, uh, the new owners are, I had heard, from the real estate agent, are hoping to build a home there, so, we'll see what happens, you know, as, as uh, you know, plans proceed, so, thank you.
And I am checking into um, at last week's meeting, we were talking about um demo permits that other communities use.
Okay.
We don't have one on file, so I am checking into that.
Excellent, thank you, okay, very good, thank you very much Steve. Um, let us move on to, oh, there is no park board uh report yet, Dolly is not here, and the park board will be meeting on the 22nd of this month, I believe, so I'm sure we may have some news later on. Uh, Road Commissioner Bob Sokowski, please.
Well, unlike the police and the fire department, we've been a little busy this month. I didn't count the number of days we were out, some days we were out twice, but there's a total of 100, 128 hours from just February of plowing snow.
Mm-hmm, yes, you did a nice job for us, everything was always nice and easy to drive. Thank you.
Well, and we thank you for that.
Yeah, great job, Bob, really impressive.
Yeah, thank you very much, that was, that was good, so, um, and I, I guess we don't have anything else yet coming up on uh future projects of any kind or anything like that?
No.
No, okay, all right, well, thank you very much, you know, Bob, for, for that information. Uh, Advisory Plan Commission, that would be from Howard, and I believe, and I will ask Ralph to pitch in in case we need some more, but generally, you were working most of the time on the rules of procedure for the plant commission, because you are revising, the group is in the process of revising plans that are very old, so um, is there anything that you would like to add to that, Ralph?
Uh, no, um, we, we certainly talked about more things at the meeting, but I don't have my notes with me, um, but we're, uh, the rules of procedure is just so everyone understands, they're, it's an ordinance, it doesn't require the kind of um approach required for ordinance, uh, but it's an internal document, uh, of course, it's available for public use, but it's really how we go about our business, and, you know, the old document is fine, it's just over 40 years old, and there were some updates necessary.
Okay, well, thank you very much then, okay, uh, for that. Uh, BZA uh report, I see Matt is not here, but Gene is here, so perhaps Gene can give us a bit of a report on what's going on with the BZA? You're muted, Gene. Muted again, okay.
You hear me?
Yes, now we can.
We met on February 25th, four members were in attendance, uh, we heard, we had scheduled on the docket four petitions, we heard three petitions, 3618 Birchwood, 213 Pocagen, 325 Oakdale, or Oakland. Um, we uh issued special use at 213 Pocagen, uh, with the standard commitments, uh, we issued special use at 3618 Birchwood and 325 Oakland with additional commitments. Uh, we also had on the docket 3809 Manawa, but uh the petitioner did not show, so we voted to continue that. Our next meeting is going to be April 1st, and so far, to the best of my knowledge, we will be hearing 3809 Manawa and 10 Powhatan, um, but we will review right around March 15th at the latest, to see if there are any additional files that are complete and ready to be heard.
Okay, thank you very much, Gene. Okay, um, now, let us move on to our Enforcement Officer, who is Deb Chubb.
We'll repeat exactly what was said. Hey, so um, I submitted a written report, um, that.
I shared, I sent that to everyone later today, so they didn't see it and, you know, you know, uh, for themselves yet, I don't think.
Okay, so um, uh, let's see, so as um Gene said, um, three applications were reviewed at the BZA meeting for um short-term rental special use grants, and um, uh, uh, one, one's up and is pending, I guess, uh, from other, for another condition, uh, uh, to the thing. Um, and then, again, uh, she's, uh, Gene stated that two people that are on the docket for the April 1st BZA meeting, uh, are uh 10 Powhatan and 3809, um, hoping that uh 3848 Academy might be able to be added to that list, um, they're just getting a few of the last items together. Um, and then there's um four more um short-term rentals that are in process, um, putting their application uh files together, that's 3843 Birchwood, 8 Angle, three, uh, well, why, why you have 3848 on there still, uh, Academy, so that one hopefully will move to the other list, to the uh agenda, and then 317 Groveland. Um, and then, I, I believe that Metta Rose Torsia is here today, and she is um, uh asserting a full-time residency and um, uh, and exemption from it, um, so if she wants to speak about that, um, you know, she would, would be able, no?
Okay. I, that we would approach that here, I'm not sure, because those through, I, we wouldn't be discussing that here, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I would love to discuss it, but I don't think this is the appropriate time to do it.
Okay, uh, we will, uh, we're proceeding with the meeting as other things, we just heard Deb's report right now, we're not discussing anything at this point, okay, we just listened to her report, thank.
Okay, so um, four of, yeah, so four additional homes that um, that I'm looking at, and um determining whether, um, you know, they're renting, whether they'll need to get a permit. Um, uh, there was one that, that was um, uh exempt, because she is renting it for over 30 days at a time, that's 210 Groveland, um, and then um, uh, we're, you know, so I spent a lot of time, you know, working with applicants, trying to get their files completed, uh, worked with the BZA, we uh revised the uh, uh, the steps to obtain a permit that is posted up on the website, um, and, and I put together a nice, I hope, a nice, hopefully useful um, uh, file checklist for the applicants, so that um we can, you know, keep better track, uh, not have to go through the entire file every time, we wonder if something's missing, we can check it off and sign off on it, then we'll know, uh, you know, which files are complete as they're compiling the information. Uh, so yeah, I attended the BZA meeting on the 25th, and the Plan Commission on um March 2nd, and then, again, I do have um my phone number on the report, that if anyone needs to call, and if anyone needs it again, is 219-210-9956, and I can also be reached by email at deb@townofmichianashores.org.
Okay, thank you very much Deb. Uh, Mike and Michael, do either of you have any questions of Deb's report?
Nope, thank you Deb.
I'm good, yeah.
I have, uh, I have a comment.
Uh, yes Joan?
Uh, 213 Pocagen, and the one that's on Oakland, I have sent to all the council members with all the information for their STR permit, that they're expecting the council to vote on tonight. They were sent this afternoon about 2 o'clock.
Okay, thank you Joan.
I reviewed both of them, by the way.
Then, we will need to add those to um either eight or nine in our, you know, as we move along in the uh agenda then, thank you.
Okay, that's all right.
All right, thank you. Um, let us go on to a white ditch report, uh, there was nothing for, I participated in the meeting this morning, there was nothing that affected Michiana Shores, so, we're good on that. Um, website, uh Samantha?
Uh, well, with the website, we are working on moving the website to a new platform, with a new layout that will be um, I was gonna say easier to manage and use, but frankly, it will be um, have the ability to be used, updated, fit support, make changes, um, which is not the case for the current platform, so um that will be um moving along um in the next month, month and a half.
Okay, thank you, Mike and Michael.
Samantha, I have a question, uh, would, would, this is Michael Martinez, Samantha, which one did they end up going with, I know there was two options out there, I made it with the government one, and then there's another, a town one, but.
Yeah, there were a town one, that, can we go with the one that, that has the town name, Town of Pretzville, because it, um, um, it's a little more straightforward, and it has the way it handles documents, I think is useful for the kind of documents that we um, are trying to usually upload to our current website, in terms of, you know, its agendas and things like that, and it looks, I think it'd be easier for people to find what they're looking for.
Got it, and regardless of the two that we helped, we chose, um, the support was gonna be 10 times better than we currently have, which was.
Yeah, but the support's the same, the, yeah, yeah, the support is exactly the same for both, um, and uh, yeah, it's, it's the, both on the same platform, it's just true that you can choose different um themes, so to speak.
Got it, okay, thank you, sure.
Mike, uh, Mike Lencioni, any questions from you?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, good, thank you very much, all right Samantha, we'll be waiting to hear, you know, some more as it moves on, and we definitely, we need, you know, help with that, because we want to have a functional website, thank you so much. Okay, uh, next, uh, nothing to report on NERCY, uh, there was no meeting now, the next meeting takes place in April, so I'll have more information for us later on in the year. Uh, and with regards to the La Porte County COVID-19 meetings, the meetings are still taking place every single Thursday at 3:00 PM, it is a countywide meeting with uh presidents of town councils, uh, and uh, and or clerks, if his presidents can participate, and then all the various health department, fire department, police, and everybody else is participating, so it's very valuable in getting information on what's taking place with regards to COVID-19. As a small town, we have nowhere to actually um implement any kind of a real plan, we can't inoculate people and all this, because we're so small, uh, but they get the information out to, in general, to the entire, you know, La Porte County and, and stuff, so we are all able to see what's taking place, so, the only thing I would say is, please encourage your friends and neighbors to sign up for vaccines, and if they need help, they can call any of us, they can call me, and I will help them, you know, get this appointment set up, so, thank you very much on that part. Um, let us move on to unfinished business.
All right, um, yeah, I just wanted to update the councilmen, uh, council members, uh, we do have with the one-year agreement with Signature Lawns, I did reach out to Jason last week, as we are approaching hopefully spring, and the last of the winter storm that we've endured, uh, but within that contract, after reviewing that, we do have two spring cleanups, uh, that we agreed upon in writing, um, and they have not been paid, uh, thanks Joan for that update, um, so I wanted to know, and I open this for discussion, on what these two dates, or what these two cleanups would be, essentially, they would be two weeks, but if he cleans everything up in the first week, and there's, you know, it'll come out maybe that Monday or Tuesday, and there's nothing else, well then he will conclude, but for the most part, uh, he is wide open as of right now, outside of the week of May 1st, where he will be in Dunland Beach. Um, the spring cleanup is, again, just what we did back in the fall, of small twigs and leaves, no big branches, no, no huge limbs, we all know the, the machine that it goes through, so we don't wanna, um, you know, throw any, that could be damaging, but then we also have to start thinking about the notification letter for the town, so, uh, I sent it out via email, uh, I guess I'm just talking to you Mike and Donna, um, I know Donna, you suggested the last week of April, and then possibly the second or third week of May.
Yeah.
I think that's too late.
Okay.
I think that's too late. Yeah, I think boat dates are too late, I mean, hell, in May, I mean, that, that's, the ship has sailed by that point, um, but I think that needs to be earlier in, in April, I mean, uh, with the weather. I mean, with the weather we're having right now and the extended forecast for two weeks, I mean, people are gonna start cleaning up, and I mean, it's, I mean, I just don't think that we're gonna get the value of having two pickups if we push them that long. I would think it probably should be the first, you know, I would say no later than around April the 10th, and then around, you know, this, maybe May, maybe April 10th and May 10th, kind of a thing, at the latest.
Okay, I had just made a suggestion about doing it later just because I was thinking of all those little creatures that are still hibernating and all those leaves and all the junk that's on our lawns, to give them a better chance, the ladybugs and the butterflies and all of these, so that we would increase their number for the coming year. But I am certainly not an expert, so this was just my thought, from, you know, things that I had gleaned along the way.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's a noble, noble effort there, Diana, a couple things, though. I mean, I think people are gonna be anxious to get things cleaned up and are gonna have at it. The sooner we can get plants up, the sooner we'll have habitat for all those folks you mentioned, and, you know, all the better.
There's a lot of chipmunks.
So, okay, so, like around, do you have a calendar in front of you for that?
Let me see if I can pull one up.
Yeah, check out a calendar and we can take a look at those dates.
Yeah, the, April the 10th is a Saturday, April the 12th is a Monday. So I don't know, Michael, maybe you tell him, you know, that week of, you know, April the 12th? I would say, that week of April 4th, you know, which ends on the 10th, or, or I guess it could be the week of the 11th. Just check with him, I guess, and see what he says.
When Easter?
I'm sorry, Joan, what did you say?
You don't want it Easter weekend, or Easter week, Holy week, you don't want that.
I don't know when the full moon is, Joan.
All you need to know is when Easter is. It's April 4th.
April 4th, for Easter, just answered us.
Yep, so you don't want it then. I wouldn't want it then.
Oh, wow.
Maybe the second week then, do it from that, that Monday, Monday, Friday.
Yeah, that's still coincided with Mike's feedback, so I'll do for 12 that Monday, or that Sunday, should I say? And then also, that's the first week, I got that one down. And then moving to May.
The 10th is a Monday, so I'd say before the, before the 10th.
Okay.
And then that's still two weeks, that's still two weeks before, you know, Memorial, or three weeks before Memorial Day, when everybody's still wanting anything picked up by then, anyway.
Okay.
Just so I'm clear, Mike, I'm sorry, so we're looking at the week of May 3rd is the day that we're looking for, right?
Yeah, but just check with Jason, see what fits his calendar.
Hold on. You know what, based on what we talked about, it could be May 10th, because I just said that he's in Dunland Beach that week, the first week of May. So I'll put it in there for April 11th and then also May 10th, and see what he says and work with him from there. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you very much for that then, okay. So we're good on our Signature Lawns. And now, the next step that I'm going to is, we have the one last appointment to the park board. And I will relate what has taken place since January, when I first introduced this. At that time, I had left a message for Jean to find out whether he wanted to stay on or not, but I had not heard back from him. So I went ahead saying that I wanted to nominate somebody else in the meantime for this particular position. In the meantime, I did speak with Jean several times. So the first time, I explained to him that we had somebody, several actually candidates, or a couple of candidates that would be very good to add new life to the park board and perhaps a lot of new ideas. And I suggested that it might be good if we could have one of those people, you know, nominated. So at that time, he told me, he goes, that, well, you know what, he says, I'd stay on, but you know, if you have somebody that you really want to put on, then I don't mind stepping down. Now, just FYI, his term limit ended as of January 1st. He is still currently serving as if he is a board member now because we have not appointed anyone new. But his term actually ended because Jean Poulard was put onto the park board in my place. I still had one year left at the time I gave my oath as a, as for the town council. So in the meantime now, I do have another nomination. And then later, a couple of weeks later, then, he wrote me a note and he says, you know, I decided that I do want to stay on. But I also notified him at that time that I appreciate that he wants to stay on and encourage him to stay on the park board. Just as members of anybody, you know, who wants to come to the park board. But that I would be very interested in nominating another individual. He is Skip Moffo or Dominic Moffo. He was the impetus behind the pickleball court, you know, cleaning up around the park, that park area, putting up that fence by the little parking area in the park. He is, you know, very interested in doing more activities and things for the park. And I think that he would make a very great new park board. And anybody who wants to come along and listen to the meetings is always very welcome, but I think somebody who wants to really move and do something would be a valuable addition. So I am nominating Skip Moffo then to be the new park board, you know, member for us, who would be basically from this January into 25th and is on for four years. So Mike and Michael, your thoughts?
Yeah, I would fully support that.
Okay, that's Mike Lencioni speaking, okay, thank you. How about you, Michael, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for somebody with, you know, that wants to have a town, so I wouldn't turn anyone away. And they're not present on the call today, they speak at the bar, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last part.
The candidate is not on the call?
No, the candidate is not on the call today. And as a matter of fact, that's my oversight, because I didn't, didn't let him even know about the meeting for tonight. So, because he's not on the board or anything yet, so I didn't even, I forgot about it.
Yeah, I'm good with it, Diana.
Okay, all right, then, in that case, since I made a nomination for it, and I think maybe we should go through a vote then for this, to see with regards to approval for this. So I will do a, a vote then, so Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Okay, Michael Martinez?
Aye.
And I again, as well, say aye then, and we will nominate Skip Moffo to the park board for a term of four years then. Thank you very much.
Just for the record, did you have a second?
Mike Lencioni seconded.
Okay, I didn't catch that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Now, we have some, oh, does somebody else want to say something there? No? Okay. We have, under new business, we have listed now, oh, Mike, where would you like to put in the permits then? At this point, under unfinished business or new business?
That's up to you, doesn't matter to me.
All right, well, we're done with unfinished business, so let's move it into new business. And let's, we can put them in as, you know, like, maybe zero or something like this before the A, okay?
Okay.
So you take this part over here about the short-term rental permits.
Yeah, I looked at them both, and so let's talk about Pocagin first, just because I have that file open here first. You know, it's, you know, all these people kind of put everything together a little differently. It's, it's just, it's always kind of random, and I appreciate the BZA and Jean, your efforts in trying to organize it all. It's a little bit like herding cats, I know. The thing, so in principle, 213 Pocagin seems to fill, then check all the boxes. Don't really have an issue there. I confirmed on Beacon, LaPorte, it's two-bedroom and two-bathroom. As it's, as it's, as it's submitted to be a maximum occupancy of eight. The problem is that in their application, they didn't fill out components on page two and on page one and two with their owner information. But I guess, you know, they didn't note if they're, what type of ownership it is or what the owner's name is. I mean, we can assume what it is, but it, you know, it's kind of a contract, so they really need to complete it.
Yes.
Doesn't it say if it's different, that one section has to be filled out? I think it says if it's different than the...
Joan, it says the owner information if it's different than the applicant, but it still asks for what type of ownership it is. Is it a corporation, an LLC, an sole proprietorship? They didn't check off on any of that, but then more importantly than all that, at the, if you get down to the bottom of page four, they didn't sign it, they typed their names in, though it doesn't have signatures on that, on their affirmation statement that's in there. You know, so I think we can conditionally approve it, but they not provide their formal placard to them until they get some of the i's dotted literally and t's crossed on this.
Okay, Mike, I think there is someone here who would like to speak to that, just a minute, I'm going on. You can unmute yourself and please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Jennifer C. I'm with 213 Pocagin. I did speak to Joan about the error I made on the application on Friday. And so I resubmitted it at Friday and sent it to her. I know she was out of the office Friday by the time I got it to her. But it is in her email. I didn't get a chance to talk to her yesterday, but I would assume it's in her email. I did correct it. The reason I accidentally did that is because I only saw corporation, so I got a little confused. So it is under William and Jennifer C., sole proprietor. And then instead of printing signatures, I, we signed them. So we did make that correction. So Joan does have that updated copy in her email, and I was aware of that.
Yeah, and then that's fine, so I mean, like I said, I think we can, we can act on this conditionally and then, you know, contingent upon, you know, just getting that final sign-off in our hands. And then, then we could issue the, you know, the placard and sign off on the permit. And just what happens there is, you know, Diana and I would sign off on it, and then you'd be given the placard to put in your window, and then you're good to go.
Okay, great.
So just a little bit of, you know, a little effort on our part, so you'd have to give us a few, couple days here. And then, you know, we could get the, Joan, you could send the new documents. So with that, I think we're okay to act on it, kind of.
Yeah, and you know what, I'll be there this weekend again, I come pretty much every weekend. I can always print that copy if Joan can't and drop it in your mailbox or whatever as well at the, so just let me know.
Yeah, well, Jennifer?
Yes.
I went through all my emails today. I didn't see a signed copy in there. I only saw the one that was, how should I say, that was typed, but there was signatures in one spot on it.
I can, I'll report it again, I mean, because it is a copy, a PDF, I don't know, sometimes, you know, if the megabytes are high, maybe it doesn't go through. I can just go ahead and re, I'll report that when I get off this call.
Okay, just resend it.
Okay, thank you.
Because I can print it as long as it's got the signatures on it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that sounds good.
Jennifer, okay, and Michael, did you have any questions on this?
No, it sounds like it was filled out, there's an updated document.
Okay, all right, thank you. Now, I would just, you know, I'm not sure what's on that actual application, because I have not looked at that myself right now. But do we include still on this application, Mike, that list of things that we ask our, the people who are getting the short-term rentals to make sure that their renters know about?
Oh, yeah, it's all in there, and it's all initial, it's something checked off on, yep.
Yeah, that's all I just, that's just what I wanted to ask, thank you very much. So then in this case, we will vote on the approval for the short-term rental for Jennifer C., and I, I'm sorry, I don't know your husband's name. So at 213, okay, thank you, okay, 213 Pocagin, so do I have a motion?
This is Lencioni, I'll move to conditionally approve contingent upon the receipt of the documents as anticipated.
Okay, I need a second.
Martinez seconds.
Okay, Mike Lencioni has moved, Michael Martinez has seconded to grant a conditional approval for the short-term rental permit for 213 Pocagin. All in favor will indicate by saying aye, Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Diana Dumbrous, aye. Thank you very much, this is conditionally approved then for a short-term rental. So, I'm sorry, Joan?
What?
Did you have a question, Joan?
No, I didn't have a question, I'm done.
Okay, I just thought you said something. All right, Mike, second one?
The other one we have is then for 325 Oakland, for the, I think it's the Shanahan's, I believe.
Correct.
Yeah, the Shanahan's. And I confirmed on Beacon, that's a three-bedroom, two-bathroom, it's confirmed in the inspection. So that would be a max occupancy of eight. And on this one, I believe that we do in fact have everything in alignment. And yeah, we're, we're okay on this one.
Okay, all right, Michael, any questions?
No.
No, okay. If Mike finds everything that is good and everything's completed, then I'm good with that as well. So then I need a motion to approve the Shanahan permit at 325 Oakland for a short-term rental permit, so...
Yeah, this is Lencioni, I'll go ahead and move to approve this one as submitted.
Okay, Michael Martinez, can you second?
I will second.
All right, thank you very much. We will do a roll call vote indicating aye. Lencioni?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Diana Dumbrous, aye. So this approval for a short-term rental permit for the Shanahan's at 325 Oakland has been approved, okay?
Diana, what I'll do is I'll, between now and this weekend, I'll try to get it, get it printed out. I'll sign off on it and drop them off for you.
Okay, very good. Okay, so thank you very much for that. Now let us move on to what goes next. Okay, for the railroad crossing at Old Grand Beach Road and the entry to Michiana Shores, Mike, you asked me to add this?
Yeah, I mean, it's, and Bob, you might, Bob or Mark, if you're still on here, you guys might have some insight into this too, as that is, well, I mean, technically, it's Michigan City, but it depends on how far out the easement is for the rail line there. But, you know, although it's great that they passed the potholes, it's, you know, the crossing there is, it's in terrible shape. I mean, it's, it really needs to be reworked, like, you know, and have it, it'd be nice to get the concrete crossover in like that's on Dunland Beach Road just down the street. But, I mean, it's gonna be quite an effort to get that queued up. I think we better start the process now because of the ambiguity of it. It's gonna involve the railroad, and I'm sure that's gonna be something else to get...
It's, it's gonna be Amtrak.
Okay, it's gonna be what?
Amtrak.
Well, no, last year, Amtrak was doing those new, putting in those tracks, and I spoke to them about redoing those crossings, our crossing, because they redid some other crossings. So I got answers back from Amtrak in the Chicago offices, where they informed me that they would only do the part that is within three or four feet of the track itself, and everything else depends on, you know, whoever controls it.
I think Mike's talking about the track itself.
Well, it's both, the crossing, the track itself, and then, you know, of course, the, 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 the approach on each, coming each way, you know, all the way to Old Grand Beach Road and out the Highway 12. It all needs to be redone.
I agree, but see, the approach would then be either Michigan City, if Michigan City handles that road, or is that a county part where the crossing is?
Michigan City.
Pardon?
Michigan City.
Michigan City it is, okay, because I did, I did contact, Ray gave me the name of a gentleman, I don't have it here because he'd spoken to him before, and I did, you know, call in about repairs on this. But, you know, then we saw that there were potholes that were repaired, and I haven't heard anything about any future work. But, thank you, do I have a volunteer who wants to follow up on that?
I can take care of it.
Will you do that, Bob? Thank you, I appreciate it. If you could find out from us with regards to that, and I can give you the name of the person at Amtrak that I was in touch with last year, okay?
Right, just send me an email.
Yes, I will, thank, good, okay, thank you very much for that. Let's go on... Yes, I will. Thank, good. Okay, thank you very much for that. Uh, let's go on to the beach access at stop thirty-seven. Mike, you also asked me to add that.
Yeah, and on that one, I, you know, Sonia, Sonia talks to, uh, Rusty, uh, uh, Rush pretty regularly, uh, with the, uh, dog swimming group. He's in charge for, uh, Village of Michiana for all the beach stops. You know, I know everybody in the community wants and is hopeful to have stop thirty-seven open this year. And with the lake level, I don't know if everybody knows, the lake level is down nine to ten inches right now. And the forecast is that probably is gonna hold or maybe even get a little bit lower. It's, the beach is actually pretty good down there right now. Um, you just gotta be able to get down there. Stop thirty-seven at this point is, has eroded down enough that it really doesn't even require stairs hardly. It just needs to be cleaned up. But the Village of Michiana needs to open it. So I've posted in the past and I've encouraged, this isn't really a, a town council matter, but seeing as all of the citizens of Michigan Ashores have needed access to stop thirty-seven, I mean, if, if, if folks wanna make sure that that's open, then that there needs to be a voice in some, uh, um, some, uh, uh, noise with the, with our counterparts, the Village of Michiana, uh, Michigan, that, uh, that that needs to, to be opened and needs to have the access put in. Uh, and the, uh, you know, the boards taken out that are prohibiting you from going down there right now. Um, so, I mean, it, you know, it's, it's, it's March. Labor, like we were just talking about, we just scheduled the, the leave, or the, the second leave pickup. I mean, it's a little bit before Memorial Day. If it's, it's too late. When Memorial Day comes, it's too late. People wanna get access to the beach, somebody's gonna have to jump on it ASAP or it isn't gonna happen.
Okay, I, I appreciate, you know, your comments, uh, Mike, cause I agree. It would be very nice to have a, a beach closer than stop forty-two for us to be able to use or for anybody to use. Um, our big issue comes with regards to the fact that, you know, our town cannot spend any money on any improvements. Just a minute, let me finish please. So in case, you know, as they had recommended last year, you know, that we would rebuild and all this kinda stuff, but it would, everything would come from our pocket. So we, we can't put any money into it, but what we could do is, as you said, I like that idea of maybe mobilizing our residents to start asking the Village of Michiana uh, as to, you know, being able to get access and what are they going to do to, you know, to do this? So I just don't know whether it's something that we as a council do, or whether this should be an individual group of people who does it. You know, that would be my, uh, my question. Joan, you wanna say something?
No, no, the only, the only thing you've, you've said, we can't put any money into it, but I do think and I've always felt we should have some type of representation.
So, so then perhaps, I mean, it, maybe it wouldn't carry more weight, but I mean, we need to get or encourage um, our residents as well then to contact or email, you know, the Village of Michigan Ashores. Maybe we get everybody to start doing an email campaign or, you know, they call, they, they email.
Can we, as a town, can we, can we put something in our town newsletter or is that to encourage people to send an email to a certain email address or is that inappropriate?
Well, I, I don't know. I don't, and Laura, maybe you can give us some guidance on that and then Mike and Michael, you know, throw in your ideas on this. So. Laura, what do you think?
I think that's a great idea. I think we should put it, I don't know, Joan, when the next flyer goes out with the billing, I'm sure here probably pretty soon in the spring, but it'd be good to put on there and it probably would be good to put on the website to encourage folks, if they have questions, to, to direct them to the Village of, of Michigan and to encourage them to open that stop.
Yeah, I mean, we get a hundred, we have a hundred and seventy-something people who, um, who, uh, get our email newsletter and it gets about an eighty percent open rate, so. But I know that people, I know people read it.
That's good. And we will have to put out a newsletter anyway. We will have to, with regards to the spring wheat pickups, so then we could add in those who need to add the information. If you recall, where we talked about, um, maintenance of trees and maintenance of lots, clearing off of materials near the roads, so we have sightlines, uh, on the corners and so forth. So we do have to work on all of that. So that would go into a newsletter, so we could very easily have information about the, you know, the beaches. So Laura, but what are your thoughts about us asking people to actually contact Village of Michigan?
If you have one particular contact for it, that would be, that would probably be useful. I mean, they need to hear that people are, right, that people are upset about this, that the access has been curtailed. So, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Dinah, have you spoken with them directly yourself?
Yes, I have been. Last year I spoke, this year I did not, but last year I was in touch with Michael Mintz. I was in touch with, uh, goodness, I forgot the name of their secretary now. Um, I, Rusty, I know from a long time ago, speaking with Rusty, Rich Young actually met with Rusty. You know, so we had a lot of communication going last year, but, and they made us a proposal, but the proposal really was, I mean, um, if we, uh, the entire cost would be ours and, uh, the responsibility for getting it done, of course, they'd have to, they would be checking it and monitoring it, but everything would ultimately still, no matter what, belong to the state of Michigan, the Village of Michigan. And they would be able to, you know, make any kind of determinations they wanted on that. So, and it stopped at that point because we can't put any money into it. They weren't going to build anything and we couldn't put money in to build anything ourselves, so.
Yeah, I'm building something over there for them doesn't really, that, that doesn't seem reasonable.
No, the State Board of Accounts would not allow it.
No, no, I can't imagine.
Not, not at all. What's wrong with an old-fashioned remonstrance? Where you, you collect names of, uh, and it, um, signatures of people in the community and that would include all the people in the community. It could be people that are in the county that also has rights to it.
That's a good idea. But maybe we could then collect all those emails and have one person, if one person volunteers to handle it and then have a,
Yep.
uh, announce, um, for instance, that we're collecting everybody's thoughts and voices on this and have them contact that one, send all the emails to one person and then that one person can turn them all over to the Village of Michigan, so they would know. You know, like that maybe. You know, because we, we can't walk around from door to door. We don't have enough manpower to do that here and not everybody's here for us to collect, especially those who go to the beach.
Well, that's true, but the emails, you can do it by digital.
Mm-hmm. So, you know, that might be a good way to do it. So in that case, we will work then, uh, perhaps, um, putting together some kind of a thing. And as, if Samantha could put it on our email and then we could put it into the newsletter, it'll be, and then on our website, it'll be great. So, all right, thank you. You know, Michael, any other comments or any other questions on that part? No? Okay.
I'm good.
All right, so thank you very much. So we'll, we will have to work on that. I'm interested in that too. So, uh, Mike, I'll check with you on that and then with Samantha, so to be able to put something together, okay?
Yep.
All right. Well, let us then move on now to, um, anything, Laura, I don't know if you have anything else to add as an attorney reporter, we sort of done on that stuff.
I don't have anything specific to add and you know what I've been doing for the month, so, yes. Uh, we'll, we'll just keep in constant contact, but, um, yeah, nothing specific to report. And Dinah, as I say to everyone, if there's anything specific that you would like reported for one of these meetings, please do advise.
Okay, all right. We'll do. Okay. And then, um, under, let's see, we don't have anything listed under miscellaneous business unless somebody has just thought about something during the meeting. Uh, then I'm speaking now to Mike and Michael and perhaps Joan to let me know that. Um, anything you need to add under there?
No.
All right. Okay, so.
Anything?
No, okay, thank you. And then how about any communications received?
I don't have it.
Complaint. Okay, thank you. Um, then for public comment now. Uh, now this is where we can, um, I will, you know, put it this way, was it Storsha? Where are you at? Are you still, Metarose? Okay, you're still there. Very good. Good. So now if you wanted to, uh, make a comment, but I will just point out that we will not discuss anything. We will make no determinations. This is public comment. You are able to make a comment about your concern and we will take that under advisement, okay? And then I ask everybody else to be, you know, muted while Metarose is speaking. Go ahead, please. Metarose, are you still there?
Okay, I'm so sorry. I think I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are. No.
I, I just wanna say hello. Um, I wanna be in compliance with the township. Uh, but I am here. I am, I am living here, um, over fifty percent of the time. So I'm willing to do whatever I need to do. This is so stressful. So I don't wanna take up everyone's time in this meeting. Uh, but I just feel like my situation is, um, it's not a typical, uh, short-term rental situation because I'm, I'm here. I'm-
Okay. I, I thank you for your comments. We will, as I said, we will not make any kind of a dis- determination here. We do have, uh, individuals who, uh, are working on this and we do have requirements of what has to be shown and it is requested, as I explained, for people at other things, that it is the same. Everybody has to, to provide. If there's a question, we have a list of things that we are looking for and everyone has to provide it. So I know that that is awfully wonderful to work with, um, this kind of an issue and I'm sure that she will be able to help you out with regards to your requests. So thank you for your comments.
I'm sorry, Dana, who was that? Deb?
Deborah Chubb. Yeah, Deborah Chubb.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments? I don't know if we have anybody left. Oh yeah, we do have one, but you know, okay. So, uh, but I don't hear anybody saying anything. So going once, going twice? Okay, so I will then move us to the next section, which is council comments. Anybody on the council would like to make a comment?
Nope.
Nope?
No.
Sounds good to me. Then, you know, I don't have any other cons, the con, uh, uh, yuck, comments to make myself. So in that case, I will ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting and we will see one another for the plan commission. And not plan commission, but for the town council, whoops, I'm taking it back one step. Next meeting is gonna be April thirteenth. Plan commission will meet April sixth, the BZA meets April first, and the park board's first meeting is March twenty-second. So, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Lencioni with motion to adjourn.
All right, uh, Mike Lencioni moved to adjourn and I don't even need a-
It looks like I'll second that.
Oh, you're gonna second that anyway. All right, that sounds really good. Thank you. We are recording this meeting at eight twenty-one PM. Thank you everyone for your participation and information, okay? Good night.
Everyone, have a great night. Bye-bye.